I'm gonna sit down for the challenge.
We call the public hearing to order. This is a public hearing concerning revised ordinance authorizing sale of .09 acres on Wilson Street, commonly known as the old Boy Scout hut, tax map number 007024-05-005. Anyone wishing to speak to this ordinance, please step forward and state your name and give your thoughts. I'm gonna close the public hearing and we'll open up the regular council meeting for October for the town of Asbury Glitho. If I could ask old Reverend Simkins to provide an occasion for us.
Let us bow for a moment of prayer. Heavenly fathers, once again, we thank you for the privilege to just call upon you holy and rightness name. Lord, this being the last time this council will come together to take care of the business of this community. We just want to thank you, Lord God, for the service of those who would not be returning. We pray on God that their service, Lord, was true to their commitment when they took the oath of service on the first day that they set on this council. And we pray that their conscience are clear, Lord God, as they go on and pursue other interests in their life. Lord, we ask your blessings to go with them, Lord God, in everything that they do, Lord, let it be to your glory. And oh God, those who were returning, Father, we ask that you anoint them with the fresh anointing of your Spirit, Lord, that we might work together, Lord God, for the good of our community, that we might, oh God, come together, Lord, without division, that we might make the best decisions, Lord God, with the information and knowledge and wisdom that you have blessed us with, to move this community forward. And then, Lord God, the new councilmen who will take their seats at the next meeting, Father, Lord, we ask that you give them a heart of service to this community and most of all to you, Lord God. Give them the wisdom and knowledge, Lord, to be all that you have created them to be and to do the best possible job that they can be in governing this community. Lord, we give you praise, we give you honor and glory, realizing that one day, Lord God, we're all gonna have to stand before you and give an account, Lord God, of this life. And we will hear you say, "Lord, well done," or "Apart from me." Lord, we just want to hear you say, "Well done, my good and faithful servants." So, Lord, give us the courage, the strength, and the wisdom, God, to do your holy will, for your will, God, is the right way. These blessings we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. To the Jesus who took the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we need approval of the regular council meeting from September 9th, 2013. If you would, make your motion in a second, maybe stick your hand up so I can make sure I got your camera far right here.
Motion to adopt.
Motion from Rita, second from Frank, any discussion? All right, I'm making sure I got the district right here, District 4.
District 4, yes.
District 5?
No.
District 6?
No.
District 7?
Yes.
District 8?
Yes.
And I hope yes. Okay, next council meeting will be November 11th, 2013. Ms. Stone, you come forward and take the voting, you've got three minutes.
Good afternoon, mayor and councilman, my name is Carmen Stone. I currently reside in Chaykin, but I've lived in Lexington County my whole life, except for the six years I was in the military. When I was in the Army, I was a computer programmer and held a very high security clearance. This spring, I earned my doctorate degree in education organizational leadership. I'm currently part of the faculty of Piedmont Technical College. Before I moved to Chaykin, I lived on Ross Drive in Leesville. I taught at Gilbert Middle School in Lexington District 1. And after moving to Chaykin, I taught at Mid-Carolina High School in Newberry County while I was working on my doctorate. I was awarded my terminal degree in May. Leadership styles and skills have always been an interest of mine, and that was the focus of my dissertation, in which I mainly dealt with hard science and quantitative statistics. I'm interested in what makes organizations successful and what makes them fail. I am in this community every week so that I can see my parents and family and also read the Twin City newspaper. I feel I have a unique vantage point, and that is what I'd like to discuss with you tonight. Technology is drastically changing our everyday lives. The internet gives and the internet takes away. For most children, an iPad has replaced textbooks and teacher assignments are done through Edmodo. When I lived in this community, I came to the council meetings every month, and I was keenly aware of the issues, and I have remained so. As the Lexington County municipality, this community has enormous but untapped potential. It's not moving forward because of poor leadership and bad public relations. Modern consumers are very different from their predecessors, even of just 10 years ago. We are all consumers on many levels simultaneously. Rarely does anyone make a purchase today without going to the internet to compare prices. When modern consumers are considering a new community, they use the same techniques to prepare schools, recreational medical facilities, and enrichment activities, just as they do when they compare laundry detergent. Before they ever make a trip to a community, they have already researched it through its municipal and school district websites, and many times, they know more about the community than the people who live there. One of the things I dwell on with my students is to be daily engaged in the activity of self-assessment. I'm almost finished. Every time this community chooses to scapegoat citizens rather than engage in self-assessment, analysis, and ultimately correction, they are cannibalizing the community's future and limiting its options. This community is broken, but was not broken by one person and will not be repaired by one person. This change will take a concerted effort by every citizen, business, and civic organization, elected official, and government as a whole. Instead of self-assessing and correcting wrong-headed notions, this community has chosen to air its dirty laundry on the internet. So when people research the community, they will find that BNL Informer, this site in which elected officials engage in slander, libel, hyperbole, and threats, does great harm and a disservice to the taxpayer and citizens. This site was closed down two times by WordPress because it was threatening. Why would people have a desire to move to a community where citizens are under attack by elected officials as citizens are constantly attacking each other over public policy issues? Why would any Fortune 500 companies entertain the idea of locating a business here? When a potential consumer looks at BNL, they Google it and they find sites such as the BNL Informer and others. They will not be willing to take a chance on investing hundreds of millions of dollars of working capital. This type of investment is done by serious people at the highest level, and they're not interested in being involved in local petty politics and clicks. They won't do it. Economic development folks at the state and county level are not going to put their professional reputation on the line for a community that engages in this behavior. I attended the DEHEC public hearing in November of 2012. It was well-attended and professionally handled by the DEHEC officials. It was clear that citizens had never been adequately informed about the water and sewer project. They were concerned citizens from all over the state, and even outside state. Those citizens left with an extremely negative view of your community, and rightfully so. Most of the local elected officials were not in attendance. Not one person stood up to defend or attempt to explain the water and sewer project. I can only imagine the impression they were left with and the message they took home to their individual communities. Thank goodness, Saluda County Sewer and Water Authority withdrew their two permit requests pending certain decline by DEHEC, as DEHEC did in 2007. Word of this project has spread far and wide, including a February article in the state newspaper about the Estes River. How many legitimate black eyes can this community sustain and remain economically viable? As an educator whose husband is employed by Michelin, I'm baffled by why this community cannot synthesize its location, the satellite campus of Midland Tech, into deep and profound job creation. My husband works with many Michelin scholars. This is unimaginable considering the investment Midland Tech has made in this community. I'm certain their intention when they located here was to be a facilitator for growth and employment opportunities. I come here tonight as a friend. I truly hope that this community does some deep soul-searching and assessment for the upcoming November 5th election. In a 365/24/7 internet world, no community has secrets. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Ms. Buzard.
After my retirement, I have many questions from citizens, as I have over the years. And I think people in this community, they got it, they understand it, they're ready to wrap it up. Prosecution and defense, put it to rest about November the 4th, and it's gonna go to the jury. People are much smarter than they've been given the credit for. I brought magazines for you tonight, if you'll hand it to the council and the panel and whatever's left. In this magazine entitled "The Blueprint," as I also hold this in my hand, a former councilman, David Williams, and that's where Mr. Fox is, told you guys many times, there's no magazine, there's no publication in Columbia that the impact fees are mentioned in. Oh, really? Okay, well, I give you tonight a copy of the magazine that does not exist, that never had this article from 2006 discussing the impact fees to the very people who build homes. Just today, I had a call from some realtors in Columbia asking about how many new, do I have a breakdown of how many new homes have been built, say, in the last five or 10 years? Well, my answer to them was, "For sure, let's just go with it." 2008, three new homes, my friend, 2009, two, 2010, 2003, three, 2011, no, no new homes. 2012, three, 2013, two. I want to read you this little couple sentences from the third page of the impact fee study to just tell it, show you how all this has been misrepresented to people, as though with a little effort, people couldn't get to the truth themselves. And they, and just this past week, I attended a class of commercial realtors and had in great detail explain how people choose sites like the Walmart. Ladies and gentlemen, none of you and none of us helped that Walmart choose that site. It was chosen basically by GPS, by demographics, by statistical study. No one had ever seen that piece of property who made that decision. They chose it based on a weighted scale. They sent their real estate department to look at the piece of property. But listen to this and see if you hear anything. The impact fees calculated by the town are based on water and wastewater system capacity as well as capital improvements needed for the system. Currently, the water and wastewater treatment plants, now this is done by BP Barber, should not require an expansion in the near future based on population projections to 2025, developed using the 2000 census data. Now, these projections should be reevaluated periodically, that's what I'm saying. Understand, these are the people who, along with attorneys, were paid $1.2 million for nothing more than a stack of paper. And they even say in their study, "Oh, by the way, the community's not growing." Now, they clearly say that because they knew this information would be used by USDA to make a loan, and they weren't going to get caught up in fraud. Also, Mr. David Williams sat right there one night and called me a liar because I said at the Chamber of Commerce, meaning I was at, a figure of $26 million he would put on the water project. And on his way out the door, he tries to slap me in the face with his loud white glass of cats, I think. Okay, here is a state paper article dated September 13th, 2007, when Mr. McSwain was still the director of the chamber. In the state paper, ladies and gentlemen, the $26 million plan to build a fourth water plant on the 47,000 acre Lake Murray, where we're partnering with Gilbert and Saluda County. And it goes on the sale, there might be $26 million, which is exactly what I said. Ladies and gentlemen, let's all do remember this article. Just, what, February 11th? You can still go to the state paper, you can download it from their archives. The DEHEC meeting, well, actually, I have about 100 copies of the DEHEC meeting. So, as I'm out and about, I just give the DEHEC meeting to people. I say, "Watch it, you won't need any explanation beyond that." And lastly, let me say this to you. I was at a wastewater class at DEHEC a couple months ago, this was February, July 12th. And one of the builders said, "Yeah, I just read the paper yesterday where Mr. Warren Bolton quoted you." And I'm, I said, "Well, actually, I have a couple of that paper I haven't read." When I went to this meeting on the Bull Street project as realtors, we were emailed insistently about attending these hearings, as we get email every day about, because in Columbia and in functioning towns, I assure you that the Real Estate Association and the home builders are at the table, or there is no table. I arrived at 1:15, the meeting started at 2, it was to end at 6. I got there early so I could get a parking space, I came in, I put my name down to speak because I could always decline, I'm about to rap it. I could always decline to speak later. I spoke, talked to the mayor and the council, no big problem. I finally left at quarter till 7, mind you, this meeting is still going on. I was just simply too tired to stop. Later, the director of the Realtors Association said, "I'm glad you came to the meeting, what time did you leave?" I said, "A quarter till 7." She said, "The meeting wasn't over till 9," so that council sat still from 2 to 9.
I've got two minutes.
And she said, "When you left, Mayor Benjamin said, 'Thanks to Ms. Buzard for coming,'" for her eloquent remarks. See, this is a problem when in Batesburg, Leeford, as people drive towards Columbia, they get smarter, and when they cross over the Gerberake Street Bridge, and they come back this way, they get stupider, and people don't have to live in that.
Thank you for your time, Ms. Buzard.
I guess she's counting her too.
No, I don't get mine. Our guy's just giving her my minutes, I know.
Moving on to the management board. What do you got to update for us on the district?
I do, am I hung?
We're moving on to this, you got a question prior to that?
I don't know, let it, no, let's keep going, let's go.
Council Department, it's time.
I'm sorry, apologies. I have no update from Central Midlands, Councilmember King is not here tonight. Chief Oswald.
I have that.
Chief Hendricks.
Just a couple of things to mention, October is fire prevention month. So last week, we were at primary school, Blue Marble Academy in Head Start. It's about 600 children last week. This week, we're scheduled to go to the elementary school and Winburn Lutheran, so we anticipate this month reaching about 1,200 young people, talking about fire safety and fire prevention. Also, with fire prevention in mind, we were fortunate to win a bid process to purchase a fire safety house from Pickens County Fire Safety Association, utilizing $3,500 from TAM and $3,501 from the fire department's fundraising money. A new unit costs about $60,000, $70,000, we were able to do this for $7,000, $1. We hope to have it a couple weeks and have a little bit of training within service and use that as another tool towards fire prevention for children. We also applied for a couple of grants to the Fire Department Commission and also FM Local, which we're trying to get smoke detectors for another phase of fire prevention. And we are preparing for an ISO review on December 3rd at the Insurance Services Office. Last review was in 2001, so. Also, thanking the Turk people who come up next month, and we'll be heading up at the next council meeting. Anybody have any questions?
Yes. Did I hear you say that the town has given what?
We're utilizing money from our line item budgets to help purchase this fire safety house. The fire department is kicking in half the money for it, towards a fire prevention. It's a trailer that you can take to the different schools and it could be used as festivals and things like that. It's a fire prevention.
Okay, did, how much did this cost, the taxpayers here? Was it some additional money, Joanne, that we had to come out of the budget with?
No, it's out of our line item.
Oh, it's out of your line item?
Yes, but it's out of the fire department.
Okay, got it, got it. No, I'm good now, thank you.
Anybody else have questions?
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
Namaste.
The Mitchell Street sidewalk project is well underway. We're still waiting on the paperwork from Railroad, so that'll be a holdup until they can get the paperwork, Railroad wants to be slow. We have a little mishap where one of the contractors actually dropped a tree at someone's house. The insurance company was dealing with that, so contractors, that's all I have.
I have a question, put it in. Joanne, I understand that we're in the process of hiring an assistant town manager.
We put out, we received applications for that.
When did council approve this position?
It was put in the budget at the same time that the council increased for the salary for it. It was put in at the same time, then it was taken out the next year afterwards, the same time that the increase for the council stipend, it was taken out in the same year, and they've also put in the back in the budget this year at the same time.
Now, that was not my question. The question was, when was it approved by council, the position?
It's been a couple of years ago. At the same time when we put in there about the increase in council's salary, there was a line item put in there for an assistant town manager. The next year, it was never hired, as well as the council stipend was never increased. So the next year, we didn't have the money to fund it, it was not put back in, and then the next year, it was put back in.
So it was taken out of the budget?
Just like the stipend was, correct.
No, we're not talking about stipend, we're talking about assistant town manager.
I'm just giving you the guideline, the dates of when all the, over the period.
Well, you haven't given me that yet. What year was it approved initially?
I think it was in '09, but I'll have to go back and look at that.
And taken out?
And it was taken out the next year.
In '09. But it was not brought back to council?
The position was like?
Well, you just said it was taken out of the budget.
The funds for it was, the position was still there.
Well, doesn't the position need to be brought back to council to go back into the budget?
No, it was there in the beginning, I'm sure.
Well, how would council be aware of this?
It was in the budget.
It's just a reminder.
It was approved, it was approved as a line item. Like I say, I think it's back in 2009, but it was never, the person was never hired.
And see, that's the disadvantage to council not having a work session, a budget work session, because council is unaware of what's hidden into the budget and would have no idea what these funds are allocated for earmarked for. And that's why it should have come back before council, to inform council that, or get council's approval, that this item should be put back into the budget. So we can just take items out of the budget and put it back in there at will?
If you can't fund them, it's something that you have to take something out of the budget for it to be balanced. You have to take something that, just like we take police cars out sometimes, we can't fund them, and then they put it back in the next year.
Five, 10 years, 20 years later.
That can be, if you don't have the money there for the funds, you have to take something out to balance the budget.
No, I'm talking about putting them back into the budget.
If you have the funds and the money coming in, yes, you can.
So 20 years down the road, something that was approved 20 years ago can just be automatically put back into the budget?
If you had the funds there, I would gather so.
Tell me something.
I don't have that on my budget, on my, I don't have that on my plan.
Okay, I'd like to ask you a question about that, because I do have a concern also. And I agree, and I agree with Councilman Simkins, is that that was '09, that that was done. And if it could not, if we could not meet that goal with the position and the funds, then that should have been brought back to the council members and let us make the decision whether we're gonna put it on table it or we're going to, we are going to just put it upon the position, but just to go and take out. Because I didn't see that, and I know I came in, what, 2010? So I knew nobody had mentioned anything about hiring an assistant. And I have not seen the justification of why that position is even there. See, there's no, have anybody seen justification? In order to hire somebody, you gotta have a justify, you gotta justify why that position is needed. And I have not seen that, have you, Mr. Simkins?
Well, perhaps, maybe you can enlighten us.
Have a, yeah, please do.
I think what you're doing is stepping on the town manager's feet. She is responsible for hiring and firing. It's her job to run the town based on the ordinances that we set. And if we funded, if we set a position to be hired, but never funded it or took the funding back, and then when she sees funding again, she can put money back in that position, but the position is already there.
Okay, let me, you know, I heard the prayer very carefully. I think we need to get off the personal feelings here, because that's what I'm hearing. But I want to deal with the policy, procedures, and business of it, and that is, if you take something out of a budget, that, and if we couldn't make, if we couldn't make it work in '09, to fund it and fill the position, then the manager can come back and tell council, "We can't do it." So then, we, that is over. But to have something from '09, and then you add, you put money out, in whenever you want to. Now, the state law says that we council members are legally responsible for the budget, no matter what the Joanne does, and I'm not throwing off on the manager, town manager, because I don't do this personally, I'm just talking about lawfully. Lawfully, we, the council members, are actually responsible for every penny that is spent in the town of Asbury Glisville. So, no, you may trust it to her, but I think that we have to have meetings when things are, stick to the orders. I think it's over $5,000, is it, Jo, that it's supposed to come back to the council members? How much is it? Is it $5,000? Okay, I agree. Do you have the orders book here? You know, just in case somebody get confused and say it's not true. But I think it's $5,000. Anything over $5,000, the town manager has to come back to the council members and ask for permission to spend.
Well, if it hurts.
So we need to really stick on that, okay? And I agree with you, Councilman Simkins. I don't think this was a right to even think about putting the money in there. We didn't know about it. It came on the salaries.
According to the code of laws, council adopts and approves a budget. Council adopts and approves ordinances for the town. Council also agrees or disagrees with the creation of positions for the town. In 2009, council voted to create and fund the line item for an assistant manager. The town council felt at that time that the assistant manager was necessary. If I'm hearing correctly, it was not funded in the 2010 budget. And for various reasons, the town manager has used the money from that line item to fund other things in the town. The funding of line item positions for employee salaries is solely her discretion. We don't dictate to her who she hires and fires, when, where. We have voted to create a position, and that's as far as our authority goes. Anyone under Ms. Taylor is her authority, not ours. We adopt the budget in totality. We've done our due diligence. It's up to her to fund positions as she sees necessary for the town.
Okay. Again, I'm hearing protecting the individual. I'm not there to protect an individual. I am saying, when you said, now, in 2009, it wasn't funded, right?
It was when we created the line item.
It was funded, Jo, Ms. Joanne? Was it funded in '09?
Yeah, I think that is the date, yes.
Yeah, well, you know, I'm not, I'm not even going to hold you to that date because you don't have it before you. However, it was taken out of the budget. It was put back in the budget. Each year, council has approved a budget. If we're going to do that, then we need to know that I'm going to put back in the budget, I need this position held, bring it to the council members, and yes, and you're hiring all that stuff. I'm not going there because that's in-house. I am speaking about what the council members are legally responsible for. That's money. That had to come back. According to the town ordinance, it had to come back to the town council members to say, yes, Joanne, put it in there. We approve it or we disapprove.
It was then the administration.
So therefore, I agree with you, Ms. Councilman Simkins, and I have no more to say because anything else I say will be a repeat. Go ahead.
Any other questions for Ms. Taylor? All right, moving on to the unfinished business. This is the second reading of the revised ordinance for the sale of the Boy Scout hut. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Dr.?
Motion from Rita?
Second.
Second from the window, don't know where that from?
All right, any discussion? District one?
Yes.
District four?
District four, yes.
District five?
No.
District six?
No.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
I move yes. All right, moving on to new business, the codification of town ordinances.
Excuse me. Excuse me. I'd like to go back to unfinished business because if you look in the last minutes, it says that we would discuss the water project. I asked that to be put on the agenda about 10 o'clock on Friday morning, but it's not on the agenda. So that's why you didn't ask me to speak on it. But I did ask to be put on the agenda about the water project. But it's not on here. And I admit the deadline, okay? So therefore, but I noticed right here on item number six dated October the 11th, they just threw something in here. I requested last, last meeting that we have a representative from the engineering company to come here and speak to the public, to speak, because I had some questions to ask. So I don't know who took it upon themselves to think that the public doesn't have a right to be getting an update from whom they are spending their money to, you know? And that, I think, is disrespectful to the public and is disrespectful to me. I requested it. I followed the town government bylaws and did it the correct way. And this is what you get. So since you have item number six here, because of the government shutdown, we have not received a letter of conditions yet. Okay? Then, I didn't even, yeah, no, I don't know who, why, and am I going to go there because I don't do that personal data stuff. But I see here that someone took it upon themselves to go ahead and say the people of Batesburg-Gleesville is willing to pay for land that they are not using for 90 more days.
I think we gave her that ability.
No, 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 no. That, no, that is, that is exactly what, read the last minutes of the last meeting. I put it out there. We need to stop. We can't afford to keep spending money, the taxpayers' dollars, and we don't even have approval from the USDA yet. We're still waiting on that. So the money that we are wasting, spending, now, I guess you, in the beginning, it sounds great, but there's not a cutoff time. And we, and it was said at the last meeting that when we get back this time, we would discuss this. So the public will have an idea because we need to be transparent. We need to just tell it like it is. If we are spending money and we don't know where we're going, but yet, how much is it? Five, $5,000? I did it wrong before. That's why I'm asking. Is it $5,000, $5,000 a month? No, this is an option. Okay. So, so.
$5,000.
For every, for every 90 days. Okay, so that's $5,000. $2,500 per. $5,000 every 90 days that we as taxpayers have just given someone because we do not have a letter of condition from USDA. So that's what we were supposed to talk about. And we said it in the last meeting that we would. I requested that the engineer come here and tell the people from, and let them hear from the horse's mouth, so to speak, because I don't know all that, but I know how to ask these simple questions. But I said, they're not here. So now we paying engineers that can't even respect the census of Batesburg-Gleesville? Is this what I'm hearing?
I don't, if you're making the implication that the money is being wasted.
I'm not making the implication. It's there. It's there. No, Todd, Todd, let's not go negative. But my question is simple. Yes. And I'm not going there. Now, my question again is, because we all know that we at a standstill with USDA, this is the month that we were supposed to make a decision to stop the payments. But I see someone went behind us. Here it is right here. So it was a, so the land has a written, the land has, the land option has a written in agreement. It was extended for two additional terms of 90 days each.
I thought the initial vote on the option was until we heard back from USDA, which would mean it would renew as required until we hear back. But the federal shutdown, USDA, nobody's working to generate.
Now, the federal shutdown was just last week.
No, ma'am, it was October 1st.
I mean, it hadn't been that long for us to be doing all this. But someone made, again, the town, the council members.
You have to have a motion to undo that.
The council members did not make a decision. And if they did, I like to see it in writing where we agreed to extend this for 90 days. Two terms of 90 days. That's two times that is 180 more days. Okay?
Can we go back and find the minutes then for that meeting where this was adopted and we go in to exercise the option, please?
Yeah, that's what we need to know.
And have that forwarded to council members.
And we need to know, yeah, because I want to see who extended this. So.
Give them the manager of the authority.
No, no, no. We keeps giving, y'all keep saying, we giving, I don't give to people permission to spend nobody's money that fast. Okay, I'm going. So, so my thing is now, since this has come up, I think this need to not do, we don't need to do anything with this. I'm calling tonight that we end paying the money to these people and we do not have anything from USDA. We do not have anything from them saying that they are going to approve our conditions. So if the land is there, so be it. If the land is gone, at least we save a few more dollars. I want to make that a motion.
Well, it's not on the agenda. We can't make a motion to have the voting on that?
Well, the reason why we can't make, now you're telling me the reason why we can't make a motion because someone decided, I requested this to be put on the agenda. Did I not commend you?
You did. And I also spoke to Zell Engineering. And also, if you've read the last sentence, it said that Carl Zell Engineering, Stacy was out sick on Friday, so I could not confirm him being here tonight.
But they have somebody more than Stacy there.
That's my contact person.
That's joy. You know, we keep on making excuses, but I'm sure that company did not make it this far in line based on one person. So I'm going to stop right there.
New business, codification of town ordinances. Ms. Taylor, could you explain what we're doing there?
Last month or the next month, the fore, Attorney Sprague suggested that we look into recodification of our ordinances. So council received the quote from the Municipal Code Corporation to get all this recodification. It's $11,650. For it to be put on the website every year would be an additional $550 each year for it to remain on the website.
Excuse me. You remember when we accepted, when we was going through the motions and everything about these different, about these different codes? To adopt this?
This is the town, the town codes.
This is municipal offices.
Not, not building.
Oh, not building.
These are the town.
Okay, thank you.
Let's do this. Let's go ahead and get a motion in a second before we begin any more discussion. Make sure we do it properly. Do I have a motion?
Some of.
Motion from Rita, second?
Second.
I'm sorry? Okay, any other discussion?
Now, why did Attorney Sprague recommend that we recodify the codes? Do the ordinance not have a code already?
The code was done in 19, right after we consolidated. A lot of them have been changed.
In 19?
In consolidating, '92, excuse me.
'92.
When the town was, um.
Consolidated.
Right, thank you. And this is just to get you up to date. There's been a lot of changes to the code group. It will change, of course, there is a code group now, but a lot of the state laws may have changed. They will go in. If you have read the scope of the work, they will investigate all the changes to the legal aspects of the state and bring all of our codes up to date.
This will also make it more readily accessible to the public by creating a PDF file that's put online. People can go in and search by topic or keywords, making it easier to search our ordinances to see what pertains to, you know, fencing or animals or whatever the case may be.
Now, in your memo to council, Ms. Taylor, you have two amounts listed here, $11,650 to recodify the ordinances and then an additional $550 to place them online.
The $11,650, that takes care of redoing the ordinance books. And I think it gives us five copies of the ordinance book. The $550, that's a reoccurring fee each year for them to keep up with that and make the changes on the website.
To place them online.
To bring them up to date. That will be a recurring cost.
So what we are confronting with this evening is recodifying all of the ordinances and placing them on the website. So they will be available for anyone to access.
Okay, questions? Do you not think it was, we need to see these codes and which is what we're going to be spending the money for? We haven't seen anything. Nothing's been brought to council. How can we say, go ahead and spend the money?
You haven't seen the codes?
No.
These are the town codes.
We need to see in black and white why we're paying $11,650. It should be. Excuse me, Rita. Let me finish. At every speech time, I'm trying to talk to Joanne. Allow me to finish with her. Again. Again, all I'm saying, if, you know, we pay $11,650, nothing was brought to the council members to see why we're spending the money or what it's for. I haven't seen anything.
This, this is what they gave us to give to council. The chief has gone out and given the town ordinance book.
Yeah, just that.
To see which ordinance book that we're talking about.
Okay, so we have not had time to even sit down. I, I repeat, I'll retry. I saw, but I didn't see because we have not had a chance to sit down and discuss it as council members to know what we're going to be spending $11,650 for.
This is our code book right here.
Right.
This is the one we have.
That's what we'll be doing.
Right.
That's what we'll be spending.
Okay.
And everything is spelled out against this document of what we will be doing to that book.
So, you know, we're spending money. Was anything, see, if this was been brought to us in a workshop, I would have asked some questions like, has anything been changed or updated? Have we updated the books? Do we need to do updates?
Look in the very front of it and see when it was first adopted. It was either '92 or '93.
Exactly. Exactly. My point. But we wouldn't have known that. But yet, we want to spend this money and council members just don't know what's going on. And we can't get a workshop and sit down and go over. I would have liked to go and over this.
1996 is when this book was passed and approved.
See, and I would have asked some of the question. Have we done any updates since 1996? Has there been any revisions?
There's a man in the back of the booth.
We adopted the ordinances.
But see, that's my point.
Been on council for two years. Why haven't you got the book ready?
Excuse me, ma'am. I'm going to ignore that and stick to what is said here. As I said, if we're going to spend money over, anything over $5,000. Officer? I'm just asking you to step in here and let's have quiet, please. I'm trying to ask a question about monies. That's all I'm asking you to do, just stand there. Oh, chief, you over there. Thank you. Okay, now, all I'm trying to do is stick on point, and that's about spending tax dollars. And that's all it is. Do not try to, I'm not going that personal route. And that's all I'm saying is that we should have had a chance to discuss this before spending more money because it's over $5,000.
All right, District one.
Yes.
What's the name of the company that we're working with?
He said that it's the Municipal Code Corporation.
Right, I have a company there. Did we bid this contract?
No, we didn't, no.
How did we choose?
This is what Attorney Sprague asked. He had another town that he went through this. This organization has been in the district for many years. I don't know of another code corporation that does it, but we've certainly looked at council for the last time.
But we haven't looked at this one. Well, how do we know that we're getting test price for the work?
I presented the documentation to council to go over. If you request that I go out and try to find somebody else, I'll certainly do that. But that comes in. but that comes in, that'd be directions from council.
All right, Don, district one?
Yes.
District four?
District four, yes.
District five?
No.
District six?
No.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, we're going for the business, I have a motion to adjourn.
Can I say something, please? Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, any, uh, call for, oh, is anybody for the adjournings? District one? All right, any questions?
Yes, I do, I just wanna, Ms. Zora, did you call us when we got back this way all stupid? I just wanna make, I just wanna verify that, because I'm a bit.
I'm not even going to answer.
Well, you asked.
Because you were, you were doing this, because.
And I'm not a plant here, Coral, if, if anything.
You are.
But I'm not stupid and I'm cheering everybody up in this room, but I'm not stupid. Everybody has a brain.
That way, it can be in the paper that you.
Then y'all should get that book, and now your money should be.
That way, be in the paper, that's all we want.
I have a question too.
I have a question.
Um, I have a question about the, the, uh, five thousand dollars that's spent on the option. Oh, this is on.
I just realized, I don't know if I would go stand up there, that then turn.
Um, it, it was my understanding that the monies that are spent on the option go towards the purchase price, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
I understand.
Um, and then the second thing, if we do not keep the option going, does that mean that the money that has spent is lost?
Correct, correct.
Does anybody know how much money has been spent, what we will stand to lose if we don't keep the option in force until we?
I think we've just exercised the third option.
So it's been five thousand dollars?
So it'd be fifteen thousand.
It, that's, that would be excellent.
The duty, uh, when do we start paying?
So it would either be, it would either be ten thousand dollars if we, if we, if, that has spent, spent right now, if we.
Either the option has just come up or is right at the doorstep.
So we will either lose ten thousand dollars if we don't go forward with the option?
Yes, ma'am.
If we go through with the option, then fifteen thousand dollars will be applied if DHEC approves and they move forward.
Right, right.
But we will, it, after this option, if we don't move forward, we will lose fifteen thousand.
Correct.
So that's what we're looking at, right?
Right.
That's just what I'm.
Well, all this talk of expenditures, it's really baffled me. I thank God that I live in a community that, with truth and transparency, and I can tell you the elected officials would never allow this kind of stuff to happen, nor would the citizens stand for it. But I digress, so I just have one question with two parts, which was for, I guess, the town manager, but she's not here, so whoever feels like they can edify me on this, uh, the question. The first part is, given the, I guess, the turn in the economy and all of this talk of the other money that you're spending, uh, one, what was the justification for needing an assistant town manager? And two, how much is that salary gonna be, since, I guess, we were never given that information back here?
I asked a question, ma'am, I have not gotten that answered.
That would be contractual with the town manager, and that's not at the council.
So that's not something that the citizen should know before it's approved?
You asked the manager, not council.
I didn't.
Well, where is the manager now?
Ma'am, I don't know, the meeting is adjourned.
Okay, well, that shows how much you really care for citizens' questions. Thank God.